Yeah, why don't we just hang on a bit? I'm sure Sally will be. The meeting, um, welcome everyone to the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two Winchester Planning Board Meeting. We are being recorded via Zoom and also live via Wind Cam. If you wish to remain anonymous, please turn your, or you don't want to be recorded, please turn your audio and your video off. We have with us today, um, Brian Sekelly, Town Planner, Nancy Pocari, our recurring secretary, and we have also our board members, I'll give a call out your name if you please respond, but present, uh, Sally Dale.
Present.
Eaching Scott?
Present.
Did we just lose Kurt?
Sorry, um, I was just, uh, he just dropped off. I think he's, he'll be back in here. He comes. Sorry. Here he comes.
Okay. Hey Kurt, welcome back. Can you proclaim yourself present?
Present. There we go. I'm working.
There we go. And D of Jury is also present. This evening, we have only a few things on our agenda. We have, um, we have a, uh, we have to change one small thing on our agenda. We are not going to be approving, uh, Planet Board minutes for our executive session at the beginning because that would require us to go into executive session. Instead, we will be moving those toward to our nine o'clock executive session so we can proceed. Let's see. So, uh, one of the updates that I wanted to bring up very quickly is that there will be a meeting of a number of people on Wednesday to discuss, um, the Civico proposal for Waterfield Lot. The Planning Board has been invited to participate. And so I will be going as chair and, um, looking for someone else to, from the Planning Board to join that discussion. Is anyone able to make it tomorrow at seven thirty? It would be very useful to have, um, someone's input. If you can't make it, that's fine. I can, I can, I can represent the board.
I, I can, I can go if you need me there. I mean, it would be informative, right?
It would be informative. Um, I, you know, there's.
Uh, D of, is it the first thing on the agenda? Will it be at seven thirty or does it go later? No?
This is a special meeting.
Oh, this is the only thing. Okay.
Only thing.
Um, seven thirty is tight for me. Um.
In the sense that it's too early or too late?
Uh, too earl- too early, kind of right in, um, putting kids to bedtime.
Okay, um, well.
I, I mentioned you too, Deb, that I think I'm traveling tomorrow and I have a dinner down in DC. I, I just don't know that I'm gonna be like back at a computer by seven thirty.
Yeah, that's.
Otherwise, I'd love to join, but.
Okay.
Dab, I will attend.
Okay, um, then I will forward you the, uh, the information about the meeting. Okay, uh, thank you all for that. Um, are there any other updates? Um, we have until seven fifteen, so we've got a good ten minutes for updates. Brian, did you have anything you wanted to update?
Can you update on Swatton, Washington? Anything?
Uh, yeah, I, I, um, I really don't have an update on Washington as long since the last time. Which was that, uh, there's, uh, there's, it's all potential that there's a potential for, uh, something to happen at town meeting. The warrant closes March eleventh. I wanna say, so, um, that's probably when we'll know really anything of substance is my guess. So, sorry for the, but, yeah.
Can, uh, I, I'm sorry, I missed the, um, ADU Working Group session, but is it, are there updates on that?
So we're meeting again this Friday. Um, this is, uh, base, we're trying to determine, with the Council on Aging, how, um, really to introduce this through, uh, whether we want to get AARP involved or, or just, uh, or, or not, or kind of like really kind of how much should this be geared towards seniors or, and that might be a good introduction, uh, into, uh, into the idea and I, we're still, uh, kind of exploring. Um, Sally could also chime in and as well as, uh, you know, anybody else really.
No, I have to remember. I'm sorry. I've been so far away from it.
Well.
Also turns out I can't come to that meeting on Thursday and I did not realize that until just now.
So the, the ADU group, um, we were talking about, um, a public outrage campaign to, and that's, I think where uh, Brian was saying, we were trying to figure out what is the best way to begin the discussion? And what's the best format? And, um, one of the players as Brian mentioned was ARP has been doing something on, um, this sort of, um, housing for all sort of thing. And this is so ADUs are part of their, what they've been talking about. So they already have presentations ready to go. They may be a bit more broad than this particular discussion that we are starting to have. So that was, that's where it's at. Uh, there are, um, some interesting moves afoot at the state level in terms of legislation for ADUs and, um, how that would impact, um, what's been going on. So I think the ADU Working Group is mostly still in a research phase. There's a lot of work in looking at what neighboring communities have done, what's happened across the country in terms of legislation. So, um, I think that's, that, we also, Brian, we have, we do have a, a bit of an update on the North Main Street Consultant. Side of things. So we've been having meetings, I guess you'd call them.
D, Dab, we do have, that is, uh,
Oh, I'm sorry. It's right there.
And we probably, we probably won't be for forty-five, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't take any of the time up.
Yeah, yeah, I apologize.
I guess about that.
Thank you for pointing that out. Um, any other updates then?
Brian, do you have any updates about the MBTA station?
I do not have any updates about the MBTA station other than, um, this, the schedule, the, you know, there's not tons of work that's being done at the moment, uh, as far as I, um, as far as I know, but all I know is, um, uh, there doesn't seem to be, uh, any additional, uh, holdups that were unforeseen at the moment. I mean, I.
And the other thing about MBTA is, um, having to do with whether the state has finalized its, um, terms and conditions for communities that are designated MBTA communities?
Sure. So that's a lot more complicated. So there's been a lot of, um, work at the state level. At the Department of Housing and Community Development, they've done a number of workshops. I've gone to a number of different webinars to the point where I think I've seen, there's, there's really two main ones, but they're shopping them around all over in different, different forums around the state in terms of how this is going to work. So DHCD just recently came out with a whole bunch of guidelines specifically targeted for this. How do communities deal with this new MBTA requirement? So these are guidelines. Uh, what they realize is that the guidelines are hard to implement under all communities. Uh, there are many different types of communities uh, that, uh, can accommodate this or already, uh, are, or are already accommodating this. The details of these guidelines go to the, go to the point of, so you really need a half a mile radius within MBTA station. That had, uh, for us, it's our commuter rail station. Has to be within a half a mile. That's the area that has to be designated for this higher dense, uh, zone or area. What they've mentioned is that instead of having just, uh, everything within point five, you could potentially have point two, five, uh, and then point two, five somewhere else that could be near other types of stations. So there, there's like that type of flexibility that they're getting into in terms of these guidelines. There's also a lot of money in state, uh, or technical assistance really for, um, for cities and towns to, uh, have their zoning bylaws updated to be compliant. A lot of the questions that the communities that are similar to Winchester, what the types of questions that we're asking are like, well, what type of process can we go through if we feel we're compliant at the moment? Like, how do we go about verifying where we are now or how much closer we need to get to where we at, where, um, so the, this number that has to be, uh, that is being, uh, thrown around is fifteen units per acre. That's, that's the requirement. Um, so, but it's really for us is, is within a half a mile of, of this train station, that's quite a, that's quite a large area that, that is different than the development pattern that's currently there and would be, would be, uh, i- i- it would change a lot pretty quickly. And I think MBTA and DHCD know that. And that's why they're trying to make these as flexible as they can. The fact that we've done things like plan unit developments and want to actually put density near the train, those are huge positives. The fact that we've put that up, not just in the center business district, but up to GBD two and three is really important as well. Sorry for the long, uh, response there, but this actually is, it actually is a pretty big deal. So thank you for, thank you for bringing it up.
Very informative. Thank you, Brian.
And can you, Brian, note that, um, I think you talked about it earlier this year, maybe about, um, whether, why we can just choose one MBTA station and not do both?
That's just one, uh, that's, uh, a, a detail of the requi- of the law that, that, um, that that is allowed, that it only needs to be, um, it, it doesn't need to, we don't need to have the requirement, this, this half mile radius of this area of, of a denser zone around both. But if we wanted to, we could put a quarter mile radius around the, the, the center business, uh, around, um, Winchester Center and a quarter mile radius around Wedgmere. I'm not saying that, advocating that at all. I'm just saying that the way DHCD knows that it's hard to do and they're trying to work with cities and towns. Like I said, I think we have a large leg up because we're doing a lot, that, that, that's what the twenty fifteen rezoning did.
I, I hope that they, uh, review their math because two, one half mile radius circles are not equivalent to one or to one quarter mile radius circles are smaller than one half mile circle. So.
That's true.
So I, I hope that's a little, they, they do better on that. But in terms of a big deal as well, I wanted to point out, and Brian, you're gonna correct me on this, the, uh, our Affordable Housing Trust just was given a grant of technical assistance, which was a big deal. Brian, you wanna say a little bit about that? You were part of that.
Yeah, we are getting a little behind schedule, but I guess we, we're probably not gonna need the full forty-five for North Main Street at eight fifteen. So, um, I think we can easily, whenever happens, give at least one hour to ten Converse regardless of that eight fifteen timeframe. So, um, Marty Jones and I, um, wrote this, uh, grant for technical assistance that's specifically for affordable housing trusts to work, uh, with, um, um, MHP, Mass Housing Partnership. For them to give nine months of technical assistance to the, to, to our Affordable Housing Trust in order to, um, get it off the ground and kind of find, uh, its identity, um, within town, meaning there's a Housing Partnership Board that does an advocacy role. There is the Housing Authority that has a very specific role related to, you know, the, the, the federal, um, aspects of housing. There's also, you know, non, nonprofit groups like Network for Social Justice that talk about housing. And the question is, is Housing Trust has money, uh, and it's a question of how are they going to, to deal with it? So, um, yeah, we're happy to receive that grant. We were, well, three, uh, uh, out of eleven communities that applied, uh, we were one of three that were selected.
So, Brian, when you say technical assistance, I know that we got that also from MAPC. What is that? Is it time of somebody with technical expertise?
It's exactly that.
Okay.
So there, she would be the, the, or I, I don't think it would, it might be Shelley Goring, who is the, the, the contact at MHP that did this. But, um, they were, uh, whoever it is, whether it's Shelley or somebody else, um, would be going to these meetings, writing up work plans, giving, giving, you know, consulting, you know, when, when, anytime you hear technical assistance, it's just consulting services.
Now I get it.
So it's whatever it is we need, they're, that's what they're gonna give us.
Great. Well, that's wonderful.
Excellent. So, um, it is seven fifteen. No, it's seven seventeen. Why don't we open up the hearing on ten Converse Place, a continue, I should say, a hearing on ten Converse Place. What we have before us is, I hopefully we will hear something about, Brian, are we gonna hear something about landscaping tonight? Was that, I hope?
Yeah, uh, so I think, um, you know, I, I, at this point, uh, we, we have not had a much of a forget deep, but much of a, mu- much of a conversation about, uh, any of the landscaping and, uh, simply because uh, there's just been a lot of attention related to the design of the, of the building. So, um, not that this is, uh, uh, going to take the entire time, but I thought we would obviously, uh, have a small conversation about that because we, we, we just haven't yet.
Yep. And then, um, and the latter part of this, this evening, uh, the board will discuss our decision-making process over the next couple of meetings, leading up to a decision prior to town meeting, I'm sorry, not town meeting, the town elections. Uh, so we'll be talking about the actual, um, concrete things that we will be doing, um, our discussion and, the rules, as it were, that are laid out in the, uh, in the zoning bylaws for head, coming to a decision. So, um, why don't we turn it over to, um, Ed Millora and, uh, one of you should take control. Who is it? Who's gonna speak for you?
Well, I'll start off. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, C N Gillespie. I'm actually Gillespie in company, but in partnership with Admiral Eora. Uh, and from Admiral Eora, we do have Paul Sutley here this evening as well. We were talking about, uh, landscaping and we have Sean Sanger from Copley Wolf, Landscape Architects. And in case, the other thing that I don't think the board has seen, they may not particularly care, we have outlined potential affordable units, uh, for the Housing Partnership with whom we met last week. And if there's any interest in that, we can certainly talk about it, but they seem to be fairly happy with at least preliminary draft. Um, and we have David Benkin and David Hossin from Hossin and Associates, if there are any questions about that. But I think what you'd like to do is start with, uh, Sean Sanger and from Copley Wolf.
Yeah, I, I unfortunately I need to interrupt real quickly and say that our, um, our other, um, Planning Board member Cheryl Wolf has, um, appeared on my Zoom screen and I don't know, I didn't get a chance to. Cheryl, can you, uh, call out present so that we know that you're here for the hearing?
She's muted. She may not know.
This is just because we, we, we need to keep track of who's been at which hearings.
Right.
Uh, I did, I did, uh, let her in, um, but, uh, it was before seven fifteen for sure.
Right.
But, um, we can, uh, can wait a moment.
Well, until Cheryl comes back, I'll just describe on the affordable, what I think was most interesting to the partnership is that we have suggested a three-bedroom unit, uh, and also one of the live work units, um, facing Town Hall. Uh, so we're, we're thrilled with that and, um, they seem to, uh, have received those and the other four units, uh, with greater interest. And we've tried to make the affordable, you know, around the building and at various heights and they total about fifteen percent of the square footage. So we've been working with the partnership on that.
Okay, I've texted Cheryl. Um, I think that we should, uh, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and begin?
Sure. Yeah, let me, uh, let me pull this up on the screen.
Here's Cheryl. Here's Cheryl. Just say yes. Say you're present, Cheryl. Your, your, your voice, your voice is off. You're muted.
That's probably why you didn't hear me say here. Thank you.
Okay, Cheryl is officially here. Thank you. Please go on.
All right, yeah, let me, yeah, let me share a screen here. Make sure that comes up for you guys. Uh, are we good? Just out of paranoia?
Yes.
Awesome. All right, great. So, yeah, thanks for having us in tonight. This is great. I look forward to having a, a good conversation here. A little deeper dive into, uh, into the site work on the project. So again, let's kind of start here and then we'll zoom in a little bit, but, excuse me, just wanted to be able to kind of think about the context of the site. Uh, and certainly while we're right here within this red box, from a property standpoint, this property lines, we're really imagining, obviously, the, the site here and the building within the broader context of the, of the downtown and the amazing green space and the connectivity that, uh, is, is down here in, in downtown. So kind of just really started to think about these walking paths and the multi-use trails, really all, all tied together and taking advantage of those spaces. So as we kind of zoom in a little bit here, um, with, um, Mount Vernon on the top and Main Street over here for context, uh, I really wanted to, yeah, kind of walk around the building, um, and I'm gonna probably zoom in, so I'll try and do this as few times as possible to stop the, the screen motion. But what we're really kind of imagining along Main Street, uh, would be the continuation of the street trees. There are a couple that are out there right now. We'd love to get those in and as many as we can. Certainly, we need to get a little better understanding of some of the utility issues that may or may not be there, but the goal would be to continue the, uh, the brick sidewalks along Main Street and that really nice kind of retail space and street, street, street scape, uh, elements and street trees along those edges. And I think what I'll kind of do is walk around the building from left to right, if that's okay with you guys. Um, and then as we kind of come around the building on, on this side with our entry located right at the prominent corner here, what we've done is, uh, in order to bring a little scale to the space, we have held the, uh, the kind of what I'll call the broader sidewalk circulation space. How closer to the curb, you can imagine people getting out of cars, drop offs, whatnot. This is gonna flow much easier. And we have introduced a, uh, a landscape bed, if you will, closer to the building along that edge. And then likewise continuing with the, uh, the pedestrian connectivity, we're imagining the, uh, the gray changes such that the sidewalk would be raised essentially at the same height all the way down, making that very easy for essentially everyone to kind of maneuver through that space. Uh, you're not doing any kind of curb ramps up, down, curb ramps backed up. So making that once again really flow nicely. And then as you get to the, uh, the opposite side, this would be our, our access points into the parking within this kind of center bay here. And as we continue down, the double doors that you're seeing here are, are in as a part of our, our utility elements within here. So what we've really wanted to do is to kind of basically get some street trees. We imagine these being a little more vertical and upright, given the proximity to the, uh, to the doors and the building, but get those centered up. Essentially, they're really hitting on the outermost space, keeping the, uh, the access to those, uh, open and fairly clean. Uh, it won't be a very frequent access, but, uh, in the event something in here needed to be replaced, they would still have the ability to do that. And what we're doing is really kind of getting a, a bit of a, kind of a splash strip, if you will, along the curb edge. You can imagine, I know at this time of year, it's pretty obvious that the, the planting directly against the, uh, the street curb is a pretty tough environment to have plants survive. So we've got a little setback here. Uh, we're in the neighborhood of about a foot and a half. And then what we're showing is really a, a raised plant bed. And I say the word raised, it'll be curbed. Uh, but it's really more in the, the six to eight inch kind of a range as far as that for some separation. Likewise, getting some low plant material in there, the kind of sightlines will always be really important. We do this in all our work, but essentially the plant material in the understory will be fairly low, uh, all pretty much, I would say, in the thirty inches or lower. Uh, we haven't got the exact palette pulled together, but keeping that a fairly low, uh, bed there. And then you can imagine with the, with the trees that we introduced, once again, getting a nice canopy on those, but day one, they would be in the range of probably seven to eight feet tall of clear trunk within those trees. And probably an overall height, uh, in the neighborhood of, uh, probably twenty-five-ish feet plus or minus. So then once again, we're getting some really good scale of those trees, uh, from day one. And that would all be brick. Once again, really kind of trying to tie together the Mount Vernon, uh, pedestrian experience, uh, down to Main Street as well and continuing in that the brick obviously extends up here, that linkage there. And then as we start to move around the building, more on the, on the water side, what we're showing is kind of this split, this entry point, this is obviously a, uh, obviously a really desirable portion of the site running along the water's edge. Uh, we realize we're certainly connecting in here with the, the broader, uh, bike system, uh, as you go north. So we're really showing this as part of, uh, really I'm calling it more of a multi-use path. And we've got that connectivity that will tie once again, running along the water's edge. We are getting some movement along that. So it's a little less, um, yeah, what I wanna call it's kind of circulation focused or, or kind of bike centric that would be heavy bike. We know that they'll be on there, but getting some movement, some in and outs along that edge and what that starts to do is really start to create some opportunities for kind of with those pause moments, those nook, kind of gathering spaces. Uh, we can play around with the scale of those, but it's starting to create these little, little spaces, if you will, that you could be off the path. We envision these being some pretty amazing spaces, once again, a little bit away from this, but you could sit, uh, gather, pause, whether we could get some seat walls, some seating outing here, whether those are fixed or movable tables and chairs, but once again, kind of having an element here, uh, kind of envision that being opportunities for potentially art, uh, certainly interpretation. Those are all really great things. We would love to kind of weave into the story and really make that really special and a part of the, uh, the site. And then once again, as the path kind of moves a little closer to the building in that location to create that space, we do kind of swing that back out. This is the really big existing, uh, Willow right there on site. Staying really sensitive and kind of away from that tree trunk that's here. And then kind of swinging that out, once again, a little bit further out along the water's edge. What we're really trying to do is kind of start to create, uh, what I'll call a bit of a, uh, a smaller version of some of the bigger, um, lawn spaces over by the library, but this starts to be kind of a really great, uh, it's kind of what I'll call civic space. Kind of anchoring this corner and starting to have all of this really work together. And what we're envisioning here would be, uh, kind of some, uh, reclaimed or some stone steps that would allow us the ability to make that gray change. That's probably in the neighborhood of about five feet. Um, and create some access to the, to the water's edge. This has been, in general, it's been, you know, pretty well received from the, uh, the Conservation Commission. We've had a at least a meeting on site and this was in some of the early sketches and it kind of went away and there was a request to bring that back. So we're really excited at the opportunity of engaging that water's edge and creating some, some definitely. uh, some, some great experiences for the, uh, for the community and the visitors as well. And then as you can imagine, starting to think about this once again as a, an overall space. So we've kind of got the, the circulation aspect here along the water's edge. You can imagine flexible seating here and then a bit of a pitched lawn panel, uh, that could be a really great space here for once again, really flexible activities. And then likewise, uh, you know, a seat wall running across the back. Once again, it's kind of, it could be used, I'll say, kind of in, informally. It could certainly be people sitting on it. You could also imagine people sitting on the lawn and using that, uh, seat wall more as a backrest. So once again, just trying to keep this really flexible. And then kind of bringing a bit of a backdrop behind that of, uh, of plant material. I think this would be a great opportunity for us to really introduce kind of the layering, the seasonality that the, the space really wants. Uh, the texture, the fragrance, the color, uh, really starting to bring a lot of those kind of sensory elements, uh, into the space where people were really kind of congregating and gathering. So you can imagine that being running along this edge. And then once again, really kind of between the building and that walkway, keeping a little bit more of that garden character, uh, along here. And we've had some really good conversations already with, uh, with Miles over at Parterre. We know that they've been doing a lot of great work along the, uh, along the water's edge, uh, and a removal of a lot of the invasive. So they've been doing some amazing work up there. Uh, so we've had some great conversations, starting with them and likewise, we want to make sure that the, the plant palette and the, uh, and you know, the planting in general is certainly all going to be, uh, kind of in, in, I guess, uh, I don't even want to call it's the right word here, in conjunction, uh, kind of all tied together, certainly with the, uh, Aborigina initiative as well. So at the end of the day, we don't want this to feel like here's one design, here's the other. So while this may be a little more naturalistic, if you will, in the, uh, in the treatment, we envision a lot of that same plant material starting to come along the, uh, the garden side as well. Now certainly there are different conditions that we'll be dealing with. Obviously the, the lower portion of the plant material along this water's edge, we'll see some seasonal fluctuation. And we realize that, so the plant palette won't be exactly the same, but once again, really trying to tie visually all of this together. So it's not feeling like, uh, a little sections or little rooms, but once again, an overall, uh, composition, if you will. And then as we kind of continue down, a little bit of a trans, uh, kind of a transitional space, if you will. We've got the, the existing walkway, the overlook that's down closer to Main Street. Uh, we can, in kind of envision this being some larger, once again, canopy trees, uh, with cutouts within this kind of small plaza space with, uh, movable tables and chairs, kind of seating elements that certainly could support and would create some of those great spots to be able to pause. Uh, as an extension of the retail space here, uh, once again, we're really seeing this being all very, very public. Um, but yeah, once again, just really starting to think about how we can kind of tie all of this together. And once again, think about this bigger move, uh, and kind of visually, uh, kind of own that landscape, even though it's, it's not. But it once again, trying to make this entire space be really successful and connected. And, uh, once again, some great spaces along the water's edge for people to enjoy. Um, kind of stepping away from the plan for a second. Uh, these will hopefully come up. Yeah, starting to give a little character of while the plants aren't exactly where we're at, uh, hopefully they start to give us a little indicator of kind of where we're headed. Starting to think about kind of the, uh, the lawn space with a little bit more of a backdrop of the texture of that plant material associated with that, uh, a little bit more of the kind of what I'll call natural, uh, even though it is still a little bit structured of the water's edge. And once again, really doing that in concert, uh, with Miles and the broader, uh, the initiative along that edge. Uh, then starting to think once again about what do those steps and that access down to the water, what does that look like? What does that feel like? How close can we get to that water's edge? Um, and, and one of the conversations we heard from the, uh, the Conservation Commission when we met, I believe it was a week, maybe a week and a half ago now was maybe we think about the scale of those steps as well. Uh, Julie brought up the question is, is there a way to start to soften those a little bit and make those have some green or some plant material associated with that? So we've pulled an image here, while it's not exactly the same, uh, but are there ways to kind of within those step zones, if you will, depending upon the wits and the flexibility of those, to start to introduce some of that plant material to soften those a little bit? And engage the, uh, the plant material from the more naturalized slope into a little more architectural treatment. So we're really once again, looking at ways to kind of blur the, uh, the edges here and tie all of this together. So there could be some amazing opportunities to do that. And then, you know, what are the, uh, the connections, if you will, between the, uh, uh, kind of the live work spaces? We've got the gardens associated with that. How, uh, how direct do we want those kind of walkways to be is, could they be a little more garden-like with the more of a stepping stone or a paver system? With, you know, whether these are, um, uh, stone dust or whether those are some low kind of creepers like time or some others that start to creep across there. But are there some ways to kind of downplay the, uh, uh, kind of the prominence of those? Let the, uh, the multi-use path be the, the prominent water's edge, but allow for those connections as well, which are obviously really important. Uh, likewise with the lawn, once again, we see that being really flexible. Uh, and, and I could imagine, you know, some great seating out there and those pause moments, once again, for the public. Uh, we've had some really good conversations with the, uh, the cultural group as well, and I think the, the lawn would afford some great opportunities for temporary art or other kind of events that could be once again, held probably at a little bit smaller scale, certainly than what's at the library. Uh, but, uh, once again, thinking about the programming opportunities for this space as well in conjunction with the, uh, with the broader, uh, overall, uh, river's edge. Uh, the gardening we see here, this is actually one that we did down along, uh, the Wharf District Parks here downtown. Uh, these are all natives, certainly from, from our perspective, uh, has been pretty successful. Uh, but once again, it's really starting to think about this being a little more garden-like, but it's taking those natives and using those in, uh, in a little more, uh, controlled manners. But the plant palette, uh, once again, is, is really what we're trying to go is to tie all of this together. An image here, kind of a little reminiscent of what that, uh, little kind of transitional space with the tables, chairs and the seating opportunities could be underneath this really nice kind of green canopy space. So you'll get some diversity of, of trees and daffodil shade, depending upon the tree species we end up selecting, but you can imagine having some, some protection from the sun. Certain times of the years could be really nice to be outside and still be a part of the green space. And other times of the year, uh, it could be awesome to be really more out in the sun. So once again, thinking about those spaces, um, and, uh, and how people use those. And then I thought this was a fun one in a sense that it really is, starts to talk about the, the multi-use path, excuse me, but the opportunity for, for temporary art installations or, or interpretive elements that could be more permanent along that way. So kind of thinking about that as well. And then if you bear with me for just a little bit longer here, and then I can definitely open this up to a broader conversation, is, uh, starting to think about the sections and obviously with the building and its proximity to the water's edge and, and starting to look at those and kind of really kind of getting into the, the nuances here of, of what that is. I'm going to zoom in a little bit so that we can see these a little easier. So kind of starting down through that, uh, that transitional space, uh, kind of, kind of more at the, uh, the southern edge. Uh, you can imagine within that tree canopy, uh, starting to be these great spaces that you could sit underneath. Obviously, uh, over time, that would be a much denser tree canopy with the, uh, the multi-use path kind of hugging the, uh, the edge there. And we've got about twenty feet, uh, of that slope. And actually at this particular case, those slopes are, are fairly gentle. We're closer to a three to one. Uh, certainly other areas, it's going to be much steeper along there, but getting into a little more of a slope stabilization and a naturalized, uh, kind of an edge here and starting to creep some of that material up and a little more garden-like. And then likewise, section B here, before I scooch this over, is really kind of through the, uh, the lawn and a little broader, uh, civic open space here. Kind of starting to think about that seat wall backdrop of the plant material, a little bit of a separation from the building's edge. Starting to think about that pitched component, the garden kind of wrapping around the back as you get closer to the, uh, the work, live elements and the homes there. A little bit of a backdrop, once again, of some diversity within that tree canopy. Certainly seeing that be a combination of, uh, canopy trees and then likewise, uh, some ornamentals in there. Once again, that'll give us some of that great spring color, uh, with blooms and then likewise some, uh, fall color as well. We'll get through all of those trees. And once again, you can kind of imagine this being the, uh, kind of the multi-use path zone within the section. And then as we start to migrate down closer to the, uh, to the water's edge, working on the transition of, of what that turns into, but starting to think that being a little more, uh, accessible, um, and a little harder, if you will, uh, with the opportunities of introducing that green, uh, within those areas to, to kind of mitigate that based on some of the other feedback we've, we've heard. I think things we want to continue to explore and look at is, as you've got this gray change, getting a better understanding of kind of what the topography, if you will, is below the water. I was speaking with Ian earlier today and getting a better read of kind of what's going on, uh, under there as a part of this overall design will be obviously really important and something we'll want to continue to discuss. And then likewise, sorry here, I'll stop moving that a little bit. Uh, as we kind of continue up closer to Mount Vernon, the, uh, the section kind of right here, uh, right, that would be just south of the big Willow. It's sitting right here is where the slopes are probably the steepest along that bank's edge. We're about one and a half to one. So yeah, we're, we're fairly steep along that edge. Um, and then likewise, starting to think about that garden space and some ornamental trees starting to be within that space, uh, right through here. But obviously the, uh, the protection and stabilization, stabilization, excuse me, uh, along that edge will be real, really important, uh, to be able to contain that and help with the erosion. And then I'll move this just one more time for you guys. I'll let that come up, section E. So kind of D, as we're moving a little bit closer, this is where we start to get some of that movement within the path, kind of geometry. Uh, and once again, I think there's some flexibility here on the scale, but, uh, getting enough room between the, uh, the, the building for a nice, once again, kind of a planted zone here at the base. A bit of our, uh, multi-use path running through here and then creating those overlook kind of spaces. Uh, where it should be like right about the edge of where we would be for our, uh, our flood zone is kind of right at the top of this. So making sure we're holding that back and we're being responsive to those site conditions. And then once again, just thinking about how you create those spaces, once again, to pause along the, along the edge and to be able to take in the, the greater green space and the, the water's edge. So that, uh, those are pretty amazing views and pause moments. So enjoying that. And then likewise, this would be up closer to Mount Vernon. Starting with being where the, the path is a little bit closer to the water, uh, more generous green space, if you will. And once again, we're about a two and a half to one. It's up closer to the bridge. And once again, starting to think about this as a little bit of a, uh, kind of a, uh, uh, maybe a portal, a gateway, uh, kind of arrival moments, if you will, into the, uh, into the walkway and the water's edge, uh, with a little bit more of a tree canopy. Once again, I think it's kind of an arrival, kind of going, uh, kind of entering into a new space and trying to define that with plant material. So it's not super obvious. But, uh, once again, kind of creating some of those spaces, that's a little more shady, a little more open. It's got the big beautiful Willow right here. Once again, it's a little more shady and a little more, I won't say, you know, it, it'd be a little tighter with the tree canopy. And then once again, celebrating the, uh, the broader moment here, uh, certainly is the big civic space on, on the site. And with the amazing views out over the water and certainly over to the library on the opposite side of the, uh, of the river as well. So I've talked a lot, uh, maybe I'll just go back to the site plan. But, uh, yeah, I would love to kind of get some of your thoughts and, uh, kind of hear a, a broader discussion on, on, on there. And if Ian, if I missed anything, please interject, uh, let me know.
Well, I, I think it might be helpful for the board. Um, the, what you see in the, uh, plan here, the red line defines our property and you'll see that the path crosses between town property and our property. Um, we have talked extensively to the Conservation Commission about this. Uh, we are hoping to go follow, uh, the, take the lead for this part of the pond for the Aborigina Initiative, uh, which has already been started with Parterre as their, uh, landscape consultant. And we'll be working, Parterre will be working with, uh, Copley Wolf. Parterre is particularly diligent about sort of the last twenty-five feet down to the water's edge. And I think Sean, it's fair to say you welcome their expertise in that particular micro system.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, those are really unique, uh, uh, environments. Uh, I think the, uh, we've talked about kind of the idea of the habitat, the wildlife. Uh, certainly I'm going to say there's food sources within seeds and flower heads and all of that kind of stuff. And then there's obviously the fluctuating, uh, the water table through there. I mean, those are all really unique, but really special and can be really beautiful. Uh, uh, planted areas. Obviously the stabilization is a whole nother kind of functional aspect that we want to make sure it gets done right. So yeah, it's a really unique kind of micro environment, but, uh, yeah, absolutely. Having that successful speaks to a broader vision for the whole area.
So I thought we've told the Conservation Commission, we, we are looking to help that happen from bridge to bridge on this side of the pond. Um, that'll also be, uh, a cooperative effort with the select board. We're meeting with them, uh, for the first time on the twenty-eighth about this particular piece of the puzzle. And we will have, to the extent that this bike path does wander onto our property, uh, we will have a perpetual easement to the benefit of the town for the path. Uh, so we see this as a, a single tapestry, uh, with a bunch of pieces to a different ownership, but we will try and make that a cohesive whole. And of course, the regulatory body there is the Conservation Commission.
So I'll say just something really quick. That, that was kind of, I just want to reiterate that, that that was going to be my only comment, that a, a lot of this really interesting work that Sean is explaining today i- is not really under Planning Board's jurisdiction. It really is CONCOM and, um, the exciting, uh, Aborig- Aborigina Initiative that the CONCOM, uh, has started. So I just want to, uh, yeah, make that clear. So back to you, Dea.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that, uh, that presentation. I'm always excited to see plants. Um, so, uh, why don't we go around the board and see if there are any comments or questions? Uh, if you could all keep yourself to a minute and a half, that would be excellent. So, um, let's see. I will see if I can see everyone. Okay, um, who would like to start? Well, I'll give you all a little few seconds to think, so I'll start. I set my, my timer. So, um, one of the things I noticed was that that focal area, um, along the commercial space seems not to provide any entrance to that space. So I know that in, you know, often when you have, you know, outdoor, you have restaurants which have walls that open up or glass that opens up to provide access to the outdoors during warmer weather. Um, it looks like you are moving the, this is in the lawn portion. You're, you're going almost right up to the building. So is there any opportunity to provide acts, some sort of access to the commercial space there?
Yeah, absolutely. The, uh, kind of the area that's, uh, shown at the moment, anyway, Dea, would be closer to what I was kind of calling that transitional area with the, the tree canopy where we had the, uh, the seating underneath there. I don't know if it's easier to bring that back up for a moment.
Yeah, that would be, that would be really helpful.
Yeah. Let's see, hopefully that's back up for you guys again, and I'll zoom in just a little bit. So yeah. The, uh, kind of, at the moment, the, the really the access point, if you will, would be located at this kind of, uh, this end of the building. So the, the, the ability to have some spill out space that I think you're describing would be, uh,
Yeah, I was actually thinking more further along because there's that broad expanse of, I mean, there's a single entrance to this very long and narrow space. And I'm trying to think of if it is a restaurant, you would be walking in from where you have your, your cursor, your mouse, and you're going all the way back perhaps, and then you're, you know, you will be looking out through glass presumably with no access to the outdoors. So. Did that make any sense?
Yeah, I think the, uh, kind of the discussion, and maybe it's a good one to have, you know, as a group here, would be how much of that is, uh, is green? Um, from that desire or how much of that is more hardscape? Uh, I think is, I think we've taken the approach that we felt this was probably a little smaller scale, if you will, and was more of support. Certainly in that seating element, uh, is in kind of this location. And then the ability to have this green, I think the, the scales that we're kind of looking at right here, this is probably in the neighborhood of, uh, probably six to eight feet, uh, kind of along this edge, just for proportions, if you will. Uh, but yeah, I mean, I, I would love to hear some, you know, your thoughts on how much of this is really more of a, a green space versus more of a hard and active space. Um, maybe part of that, to be totally fair, is, is what this space turns into, whether it's restaurant or whether it's more of a, a smaller kind of scale, scale use, uh, as well.
The other, the other, yeah, the other piece of that, Mr. Chairman, was, um, we did have hardscape out there and we had a wider space and it, uh, impacted into the oval, if you recall.
Yep.
So we looked at that, the commercial space, if it's a, a restaurant, we do have two entrances, by the way. There's a rear.
Okay.
Invision. But you're right, we made a, a distinction that, or it came to the conclusion that it's probably less likely to be a cafe and more likely to be some other kind of retailer, commercial space. And that we would rather accentuate the oval. We we really felt as though all the conversation we've had was that that oval is is a really powerful part of the project. I had a discussion with someone you you all know well the other day, and he said, you know, I've never, I've been here thirty years, I've never sat in that space. And I said, that's because there's no there there. And that was his reaction too, he said, you're right, there's no there there, so we're we decided to push that back and open up the oval as opposed to having dedicated seating for what may or may not be a cafe there. That could change, we may be back before the board, but we don't know what that tendency is yet. And we wanted, we thought the oval was important.
Yes, to say, Ian, just to build upon that, yeah, I think in the the greener vision, if you will, allowed us to keep this fairly tight. You can imagine as more seating would be in here, that that dimension would really need to kind of grow and creep, which would certainly have an impact on that space, so. I think once again, to Ian's point, we're really looking at this as being more of a a broader, as large as possible, kind of civic space, if you will, kind of at that corner.
Yeah, I I appreciate that, one of the things that is how accessible is this to people who probably don't feel comfortable walking or getting onto grass? So those are some other things that go into that, is if there is some hardscape there, then someone who isn't has mobility issues or needs assistance could find a place and enjoy that area. So let me, let me turn it over to, and Brian has pointed out that we should also be speaking to Brian Manter. So why don't we finish up with the board and then go to Brian Manter, so. Anyone else on the board, thank you for that response.
Ed, Diab, I can go if it's all.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, so so Sean, thank you for for your work on this, it's really interesting. I had the same observation, Diab, that you did, which is just the the interplay between the retail space and the outdoor space that's evolved a little bit. In the iterations we've seen, so I mean, I I won't be repetitive, but I would have the same question, I do think the use of the retail space will really impact heavily. You know, how the outdoor space connects with the the building. But one observation I had is that I do think one thing that this accomplishes that I think is nice, and I think the town would appreciate is we're losing a lot of green space that now fronts Mount Vernon. And I think it's nice that we're now the developers giving back some of that green space, and they're actually doing it on the riverside, which I think is probably more desirable for the town. So I just wanted to highlight that, that I think that's a nice, nice feature here. The only question I think I had, Sean, for you is on the trees on Converse Place. It's a really narrow street, and I'm just thinking like, what variety of tree do you think works well? That close to the building in such a narrow street, just, you know, fast forward twenty, thirty years. You know, what does that look like? I'm not, I'm not a pro for moving trees, but I'm just curious.
No, 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 absolutely, it, yeah, absolutely, so certainly the the easy ones are certainly the ones that are kind of out here, much more open. Be more of your traditional kind of canopy trees. But we would propose really, and as to your point, on kind of this little bit narrower walkway, we want to make sure we've got the clean and easy access through here, but to start to think about those being a little more vertical and upright. And there are definitely some, what I'll call more columnar type of maples, oaks. But you know, they max out probably in the neighborhood of, you know, fifteen feet wide, but they go upright. You know, once again, pretty vertical, so it's definitely kind of a different form within those trees, but absolutely, the ability to kind of get those in, and they work really well in those tighter kind of narrower spaces, but they allow us to kind of get that ceiling and that green space and that texture into those spaces that work really well.
Thank you, that's interesting.
And Kurt, yeah, I'm certainly happy to share images and and whatnot of those as well.
No, I I think that's helpful, I my only last observation is I think it looks like you've added a lot of trees really with this plan in a part of town and an area where, you know, right now, I don't feel like there is a lot of tree there, it's a lot of asphalt, a building, a lot of green space, a lot of lawn, basically, so I do think that's a nice a nice feature of this too, since you're introducing quite a few trees, that's it, I think I'm over my time.
Yeah, can I go next? You're muted.
Hey Cheryl.
Hey Sean, I'd like to just follow on on Kurt's comments. One of my questions is, you mentioned the willow, so I would like to understand what is the willow an existing tree, what existing trees will the construction project go to every length to maintain and and make sure that they survive?
Yeah, so the the willow that's right here is is it is existing, and it's it's really big, it is in need of a little love, we're going to be honest, we did meet with the the Conservation Group down there, oh, three weeks ago, maybe a month ago now, I'm losing track of days here with with Co Fitzgerald, to be honest, but we did have a nice site walk out there and met with them. There's definitely some pruning, shaping, some dead wood in there as well that we'll need to address and kind of take care to, you know, give, once again, this thing a little attention that it needs. But it is definitely a signature tree out there, it's really big, and it's definitely a kind of an icon, if you will, along that side of the river. And then there are left definitely some scattered, I'm going to guess they have been newly planted. Timeframe, I'm not sure, but I would guess probably in the last five years that are smaller along here, that I think, given the kind of our hands-off approach, if you will, of the grading along those, would be great to be able to work within those. And then there's a couple of evergreens that are a pretty good size up in here as well. And a little looser kind of material, and once again, the Conservation Commission was a little less concerned with those, but that's obviously, given their locations and proximity to the water, could certainly stay, and we could work with those. But I think that's a, once again, kind of a conversation we would love to get into a little more detail, certainly with the Conservation Commission, and see how how valuable those are, but certainly the goal would be to to work with those and keep those, Cheryl, for sure, they're natural resources. And if they're in great health and and, you know, they provide a scale and a sense of space already. It's really hard to recreate those, certainly within yours and my lifetime.
So absolutely, so history is, it's all about.
There you go, exactly.
All about talking to the town hall and then creating something in brick and and of a scale that that's going to be, you know, a lot for the the town to take on initially, so I think having the existing trees there is going to be really important. I I want to move really quickly here, because I had a couple other things. Just overall, I, you know, I I don't see, you know, big changes, but that's fine, it's good, I think you've brought texture and a sense of place through like this kind of series of of very different kinds of experiences around a building that we're always trying to break down the scale of, right? So I think coming off from Mount Vernon, which is a much deeper sidewalk to kind of give the village this sense of, you know, a new kind of retail, and then the portals that you talked about. I think what Kurt was talking about with the verticals on one side and the sort of balconies or the scissor kind of expression on on Converse, and then on the other side of the building, there's, you know, spaces that kind of go in and out, whether they're residential or they're public, you know, I think all of that is really is really kind of talking to a more village scale of experience, and I really enjoy that. Really well done, my concerns are that I don't, whereas I understand the oval and I appreciate the the stairs and Julie's comments about making them greener. I I'm with Diab, I think you almost have to have two walkways, oh, sorry, Diab.
Just, you're running out of time.
Okay.
So just finish your, finish your thought, please.
Okay, so I don't understand for a a building of this size and program, I don't understand the program of creating a lawn. I'd like to understand that better, I know we've got lawn in front of the library. I think it's a, it's not necessarily a very adaptable program. It's very, it's very, you know. It belongs to a town like Winchester, but we're creating, we want to stay in the village, right, when we're in the in on the town side. We don't need big backyards, we need program that gives public a space to to do things. My other issue that I have is that I don't really understand the width of the people and bike path. And I'd like to know whether or not the Minuteman Trail has a width that we can study or you can study and really understand the safety between pedestrians and bikes. You know, I am completely in in fully respect the the group of people who've tried to do biking through town, and I think we need to really we really need to respect that with with this program, done.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to go next? Li Chang, your hand seems to go up.
I love Cheryl's comment about breaking it up and having different qualities of space and making it cohesive, of making it more like a village. And I I agree, it's really well done, and it's really exciting to go around it and to have these different experiences, I would love to see. I think the sections really speak to that and help understand it, but you know seeing it in perspective, perspective view.
Sure.
Close up, as well as from, you know, across the across the river would would be lovely to see how the relationship between the landscape and the building happens. And how it breaks it up in in addition to some of the architectural features. One, one thing about the plan that I I was concerned about is really section D where the it's where the residential and then the bike and then the pause space happen at the same time at at one of the most narrow parts of the bike space, and like Cheryl said, I think especially with that little kink and that little wave in there, I can imagine, you know, somebody coming out of the door, and you've seen somebody and then kind of stopping there, talking, and then, you know, another group maybe pausing at that thing scene, you know, having that like very possible interaction with the with the stream of bikers to stop. And then, you know, it becomes what what was supposed to be a pause space becomes like a traffic jam. It's it's such a tight little spot.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think to your point there, I I think we can kind of continue to study that through section to make sure that those proportions are right. To make sure you've got enough room to on, kind of get that away from the units themselves, at the same point, maybe that that kink, or you described it as a little softer. And then allows us to make that that overlook or that pause moment, I mean, maybe that's either elongated, or maybe the thing is just a little bit smaller from a proportion standpoint. I I think we want to, I was, at least personally, I think we were kind of envisioning the the lawn as the bigger civic space, if you will, and then those pause moments being a little bit more intimate as a smaller scale, so maybe it's just a matter of kind of playing with those dimensions to get that to the right scale to your point.
Yeah, thanks, and I'm really excited to see the plant list. And understand how it, you know, relates to the initiative you you were talking about, and I'm thinking the initiative is the is the one about, you know getting getting into a native state and and sort of getting it perpetual, okay.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's the vision here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
So I'm really happy that you're working with Parterre, and I think that that level of expertise combined with the Copley Wolf is going to create a beautiful bank for this site. One thing that I, you don't have to tell me about it now, but I want to make sure that you provide us with the highest and best tree protection for the willow. Because if you go back to the site plan, you'll see that the willow roots are well within the work area, and I know part of what you have to produce is something, I think it's called a laydown plan for how you're going to stage the construction and so on, and I just, to Cheryl's point, to be really, really aggressive about protecting the roots of that tree, it's very old, and I was very happy to see that you noted it needs some work. Last summer, there were people photographing a nesting pair of Baltimore Orioles in that tree, and it was really
Awesome.
Important to keep. Going around to the south, I kind of have always pictured the oval area more as an event space broken up by greens. So like, I really like the grove over here on at the bottom of the property with the seeding underneath it, and for some reason, I just kind of imagined that this, the path would be would widen out here, and, you know, Cheryl mentioned about events, it's a great place to do, you know, art shows, it's a great place to incorporate aspects of town day. And I know that a big part of the the open space provisions have to do with permeable. So even as I'm visualizing something that is impervious. I I I don't want us to go away from whatever requirements there are for permeable surfaces, so it's kind of really a delicate dance between the two.
Yeah, a little bit of balance of finding that right scale and proportions and usage programming to your point.
Grass is squishy, grass is wet, I love my lawn, but when you're downtown, you're shopping, you're doing whatever you're doing, it's not quite the same experience. I mean, Cheryl said it, we have lawns at home. The other, I have another concern, which is where the bike path, I did note in your your sections that it goes from eleven to ten to eight feet wide as it goes up to the top of the site. And when it's, when it curves into that first live work unit, it's really close, it's like five feet from this building that has a a face going up three and a half stories before it steps in. So I am really on the fence about this overlook spot here. I realized what you were doing was curving the path to get away from the tree roots.
Yep.
Which I celebrate. I just don't know whether the people that are living in, especially these two southernmost live work units are going to appreciate the the proximity and volume of of bike traffic, and I think if you do the bike path analysis, you're going to find that the path might not be wide enough for joint multipurpose, it might be that you have to say walk your bike here, or something like that. And then, so I think those are my thoughts about that, it just really juries out on that land that overlook, I love it, I think it's great, it gives you a place to be, and it's all about place making. I'm just worried about the practical impact on those units. And the and how close it is to the height of the building. And then moving around to Mount Vernon Street, I'm very happy you're introducing street trees. And again, best practices all the way through. And the only other thing would be on the face of the building, whether there's any opportunity to introduce any kind of greener, I mean, I suppose it might just be pots pots of plants around the entry or something, but I just want it to be as as green and 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 exuberant as possible. And then that's what I had.
Thanks, Sally.
Thanks, Sally. Appreciate that, and then I don't want to forget Brian Manter, our Assistant Town Engineer, Brian.
Hi, hi guys, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sean, thank you for your presentation and your careful consideration of blending of landscape between the building and a natural riverbank. But from a civil engineering standpoint, underneath that green space to the south is the infiltration system.
Correct.
And there is an overflow outlet that looks like it could be right where your reclaimed granite steps are, so I'm not sure if that actually is in line, but just looking at your your schematic here, I believe that that outlet would be right in that location, so just something to think about moving forward.
Yeah, absolutely, Brian, we're tracking that, and definitely as they're kind of designing these components together, making sure that's all thought through and tied together seamlessly, absolutely.
Oh, is that it, Brian?
Yes, yeah, I just wanted to bring that to the landscapers' attention, landscape design.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
Thank you. So I think at this point we are, if, are there any other questions to ask, because then I think we're going to move into I don't know, I know Philip Chen is here with us this evening, I don't know if this was part of his review, I'm pretty sure that it wasn't, but I'm willing to be told otherwise.
So there are parts of the design guidelines that talk about specifically in the PUDs promoting public space. So Philip's role is here is saying where the where the project meets those guidelines and where there's where it potentially doesn't. But he, for this meeting, we did not prepare Philip to talk about landscaping, so I'm sure it was not reviewed just to speak out of turn here.
No, you're speaking quite into, well, maybe Philip can say that he did work.
I did want to make one other point after Brian's finished.
Yeah, let me just say that I was, what I was getting at was was not Philip's role in the process, but whether he had Philip to said, had anything to say about this particular aspect. And you're here, Philip, so why don't we let you speak for yourself?
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair, I I I did not review this in advance, but um, you know, I I um, as I heard all the comments, I think very clear from the board, I would just echo some of them about the, it does seem like a lot of program, when you think about the width of the green space at certain parts of the along the, along the water's edge. And just considering how much program you can give into that amount of width. Particularly, I think, as Ms. Dale said, you know, um, right around where those live work spaces are. Um, seems like a lot going on there. Um, and and we did at one time review the lawn, whether um, that should be something that's more ornamental. Uh, uh, not that lawn is ornamental, but um, or but on the scale, less program space, you know, less hard scale. So th- those are my own comments, Dan.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Sally, go ahead, please.
The other thing I wanted to follow up on um, Diab was you mentioned about depending on the use of this commercial space, um, having these be um, very transparent glass walls. In fact, that's one of the design guidelines is first floor transparency. And I think about, um, uh, is it Black Horse that has the open, the folding back windows? So people can sit right outs, like inside, but with the fresh air, just an elbow reach away. And I look at the the row of shrubs behind the seat wall and it impacts that sense of access and transparency. I don't know what I would active a- advocate for. Um, but I definitely want this to be, what Cheryl said, a programmable space and an opportunity to bring the outside in in when the, when the weather permits. Um, and and the success of that commercial space, um, I would think would um, be boosted by its transparency and its accessibility to the public space. Um, but I, I hasten to say, I'm not a a commercial space um analyst. Um, and it's really about the market. Um, but but depending on what, as you get closer, what kind of a a tenant you might get in there, they might have some um, programmatic goals of their own. Um, so I think it's, there's a lot up in the air on that oval.
Yeah, and and Sally, just to make sure, I I want to make sure I'm understanding the comments correctly. I mean, definitely, we've been showing that as green, but uh, I, you know, from our perspective, the the height of that plant material would be, would be very low. I mean, we're probably in the the two foot, uh, maybe max of thirty inch height. Once again, we don't want to create that, that green wall that's a backdrop from the public space at the same time of separating the space from the inside. So I I understand the the comments, uh, and once again, the 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 connectivity, if you will, visually from the inside and out, and think part of that could be accommodated with the height. But if there's, you know, the conversation of this being a little more hard and a more direct spill out, that's certainly another conversation. But yeah, I just wanted to interject that we definitely don't see that as being a really kind of tall shrub component there as well.
That's awful, thank you. So just keeping all the possibilities open and it's really driven by what drives commercial success in terms of the mix. Um, and whether it's, you know, food and drink, or whether it's, you know, books, I I don't even, you know, bookstore, whatever. I don't know how to program a a commercial spaces for maximum, um, you know, revenue to the community.
I'll just say something uh, to be uh, real quick, is that typically how the planning board has has um, dealt with uh, landscaping in general? Um, for projects in the Center Business District for Phil's Hardware and for Elmwood, was uh, thirty six to forty Elmwood. Were to, um, because it does, it does matter what happens, what goes in there, that the final landscaping um, really is approved by the Design Review Committee uh, at a later date. Um, uh, so that that it's it's not like um, this is all done in stone now. It's more of, there are concerns, the reason, you know, we're kind of getting into the deep dive here is that we want to talk about concerns. Um, and seeing what changes could be uh, potentially uh, uh, done uh, and preferences. But uh, in the past two instances, there were, it was conditions, it was conditioned to be uh, kind of finalized by, uh, actually, not not just the Design Review uh, Committee, but also the the Design Consultant in this particular case, Philip Chen.
And and Brian, if I could just interject briefly, I don't want to kind of hog the the time, cause I know you guys are on a, on a schedule with an agenda. But we are doing some work right now in in Beaumont, so we've got a multi-use path, it's really more of a DOT project. Uh, but to Cheryl's earlier question, the the kind of the preferred widths on those would be more in the uh, the ten foot kind of dimension that would accommodate the bikes as well as pedestrians both, kind of a more of a shared use kind of a detail. So once again, we we definitely have some experience within the uh, kind of the more moral, um, total multimodal aspect of those kind of spaces as well.
And to talk about that real quick, and then I'll go back to Diab. So the ma- uh, Mastod could not get, they they could not get the sufficient width in for this portion of the bike path.
Okay.
Which is why this is kind of the unregulated uh, town portion that goes here.
Gotcha.
So that's um, so technically, it is not uh, is not part of uh, the official tri-community greenway.
Ah, alright, good to know.
Those dots, the the in-between the the actual path.
So does this mean that we get to put signs up like they do on streets under construction? You know, use it at your own risk, beware of raised structures?
I mean, it's still on our property, so, yeah.
Well, also, I mean, there's plenty of municipalities that designate certain areas and say, no riding bikes, you walk your bike from here to here.
Yeah. Um, so I think that um, unless there are any other um, comments or questions about the landscaping, um, I would uh, like to thank Sean for that, for that um, presentation.
Absolutely.
And then, um, I think we can move on to, I think, what is the next segment, which is to lay out what we will be doing over the next several weeks up until our decision. So I know that we have, um, we will be hearing from uh, other committees. So for instance, Housing Partnership Board has reviewed this. I believe the um, Design Review Committee is having their second meeting on this tomorrow evening. Um, Concom, we will be interested in their input, but they are, um, they are a separate body with their own um, purview and authority. So um, we can, uh, they're not really, I mean, we can listen, but their their input is separate. They will be looking at how, at their own um, regulations. Um, I know that uh, we also have more input coming from uh, VHB.
So um, there was a response, um, there uh, they actually got into the packet this week at, by mistake, it was supposed to be for for next week. Um, but most of that is also through Concom in terms of the VHB uh, review. Uh, that is still um, reviewed and approved, uh, or those conditions are uh, through Concom as well.
Right, okay, but we are going to hear something from VHB about our, about stormwater management on the property from our perspective, correct? Cause they did present something to us before.
Correct, and 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 now the applicant has responded to 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 their, to their comments and and has responded to all of them.
Okay.
So the there, I believe there's only, out of the twenty-two comments, I believe there's one comment um, that is still under discussion.
And do we, do we get another round there, or is that pretty much the end of the process?
It's not, I mean, it's certainly not the end, I think that, I think that it's still ongoing with with uh, with with Concom. Is that, is that the the final uh, um, stormwater management uh, for the, for the property is still done through through the Conservation Commission? VHB is both the consultant for us and Concom. Um, but it is actually, that is the process that it would go through.
Okay.
Or it would be contingent, it would still be contingent upon Concom's final approval, so.
Right, but for for clarity, we're not expecting VHB to provide us with further responses for the, for the.
No, not at, not at the moment. Um, VHB reviewed, reviewed it uh, and gave comment. And then where we are right now is that Beals and Associates has responded to all of their comments and have either incorporated that or agreed with the comment. And like I said, there are, I believe, twenty-two or twenty-three, and there is one comment, comment number nineteen, if you're care. Um, that, um, and I, the problem is I couldn't tell you what comment nineteen is, that's the, that's the funny part.
It's not a detail important to this.
Anyway, there's one comment, uh, uh, so, so, but that that will be finalized uh, uh, through their Conservation Commission.
And and what about Tool, are we expecting something more from Tool?
We are expecting something from Tool and we plan to have that for our March first meeting. Um, related to, um, they've had one back and forth. So we have not received that, 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 the, we have not received one memo from them, that they owe us one more memo and we'll see where we are at that point.
Okay. And then, um, we need to um, reach out to Mr. Chen, who is our design consultant. And so, um, one of the uh, one of the roles um, that Mr. Chen is playing is to see how this building um, accommodates the design guidelines and regulations. And so, um, I know we've heard from him and he's been very helpful in um, reviewing and 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 um, his input on some of the design changes has been really helpful. So I think we still um, would like some indication of where where the design is relative to what the guidelines and the regulations.
And so, yeah, just to expand on that super quick. So what we're specifically talking about here is in the zoning bylaw, section seven point three point seventeen. I'm gonna put this up at the moment. So these are the design review guidelines that are in the zoning bylaw. Um, uh, so yeah, this this is specifically what we're talking about. Uh, there are uh, some other reg um, guidelines when when here related to the PUD as well. Um, but it's still all kind of based within this seven point three point seventeen. So I think the, um, any, um, and it's the entirety, I believe there's seven sections, but it's 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 seven three point seventeen. That is the, uh, where we're looking.
Okay, so, um, so I guess we're looking for a a March first summation, so that we get that by then, I believe. Is there, um, so now the question goes to the board, is there some information that you feel you need in order to come to a decision or to come up with conditions? Um, now is the time to ask for that information, because it will soon be, when we move from the discussion deliberation process to the decision-making process, we will have hopefully, everyone will have to use the information they've already been given. We won't really have a time or a chance to get more information. So if you think you need something, uh, Brian is very helpfully. So we are in section thirteen and we have been that way for a while, very deliberative body. Um, and so, um.
Sally has her hand up, uh, Dan.
Thank you, Sally, uh, Brian, Sally, go ahead.
So I I had a list, because I thought we were supposed to come to this meeting with a list of things that we wanted to find out more about.
I I I was about to get to that, I'm just, yes, so.
So.
Go ahead, this is.
I have some simple things, like does, do all the windows open?
Yeah, so these are, these are things that we, um, I would ask that, we just make a note of them and then have.
So so I'll just ask the questions then, do all the windows open? And um, at what point in the process do we start to look at planned materials and colors and having in that end up in a materials test wall? Um, and um, when will we know the exact height of the tallest mechanical unit? Um, and with regards to shadow impacts, I know the whole point of the interactive model was to be able to enable us to do that. And I almost wonder if it would be possible to have somebody who's really facile with the tool, because I found it to be not immediately easy to use, um, that could do a really good shadow study demonstration for us at some point. Um, and um, then I know that part of our design guidelines have to do with exterior lighting. And I wanted to make sure that there wasn't any glare and spillage. And so having a lighting study based on the selected fixtures. Um, and one of the things that I would hope that we would go for in that process is that we try as much as possible to make this a dark sky compliant installation. Um, it would be great if sometime in the next, you know, ten, twenty years Winchester could actually become a dark sky community that would really be very progressive of us. Um, and then, um, so, and I talked about the tree preservation, um, that was a big one for me. And then going on to about Tool, um, that I had asked a while ago for some information about the parking garage um, with regards to the statistics of what's the turnover rate, you know, from when you arrive to get your car and when you get your car? And from when you drop your car off to when the next car can pull in, sort of that, the cycle time of each vehicle. Um, the reason I'm interested in that is because I want to know that this design of parking, which is very innovative, is not gonna have a backup impact onto Mount Vernon Street, which would really um, create ire in town, people would just be unhappy about that. So that's a really big one. And also, um, when will we start to flesh out where the commercial parking and handicap parking goes? Um, it seems to me that some of that parking that's existing along Converse Place is going to get um, bumped into by cars trying to make that turning radius. Um, so that might need some re- reviewing. And speaking of Converse Place, what provisions are you making to um, negotiate with the Converse Place of Butters? Who use Converse Place now for trash? Um, and um, pallet storage? And it's just kind of like not a really nice, and so we have to find a place to do all that stuff. Um, and then I had a question, just going through every little fine tooth comb of our regs.
Sally, Sally, can I ask how, how much longer is your list?
No, I think that was the end of the list.
Well, I was gonna say, certainly, if you have it in electronic form, you could send it up to Brian.
I can type it up and send it to Brian.
Yeah, that, or yes, please do so.
Okay.
Any, any, if you have any questions, um, please.
I didn't get this done until six fifty-eight.
Yes, uh, we've got a hand up.
I I ju- I just want to say, Sally, that those are real, all really, really good questions. And I think that the best way for us to respond to them will actually be to have a list and to actually submit written answers for all of those things. Um, but they're, they're um, all very thoughtful things that we will be working through in the design process. But um, thank you for that, I actually.
You're welcome, and I'm so grateful to have a chance to send them to Brian, to root to you, um, and Sean and your team for.
And and the other thing I wanted to say, I know David and I have talked about this, is that if anyone uh, of the of the board members needs assistance, you know, navigating, I mean, I think doing a animated shadow study is something we can absolutely do. But if anybody actually needs some help with that, we are more than happy to, um, you know, put you in touch with someone in the office and walk you through the process. So, you know, just let us know, that's not a problem.
I want to, um, thanks for that, David. I want to say one thing, I guess, about the commercial parking, um, in that it was never anticipated for there to be on-street parking on Converse for this. The, I think the idea was that the commercial parking would end up being for the employees of those establishments that would be in the garage or in the, 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 uh, yeah, in the, in in the garage. But the idea would not be that there would be um, additional on-street parking due to this, due to this development.
Well, there's a requirement for on-street parking based on thousand square feet of commercial.
It's not, it's not for on-street, it's providing parking, so it's, it, the parking will, would be in the garage.
So if you had um, decoupled the parking from the purchase of the units and then people purchased up to one or one and a half spaces per unit, well, they can have purchased a half space, but the, you're saying that commercial customers would put their car on the lift while they went in for lunch?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying commercial employees would put their car in in the, in the garage.
But we would lose those fourteen spaces or eleven or whatever it is on Converse, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just saying we're not, we're not introducing it, there is no on-street parking that is required for this. There is parking that's required for the commercial, but it's not required to be on-street. So the commercial parking that that would be associated with this development would be in the garage and would most likely serve the employees of the commercial establishments.
And and what about handicap parking for customers visiting commercial spaces?
I mean, it is a, in the town center, um, so there, there is available um, handicap parking as well as other types of um, on-street parking. Handicap parking as well as other types of um on the street parking.
Yeah, that.
I I think when we lay out the sidewalks and the streets and so forth, we will be indicating where on street parking exists. And I think we can show that to you in conjunction with the parking, the parking times, who's parking in the garage, all of that. I think we can give you a sort of a rundown on that.
That's great, that's great. So I'll write that up for Brian, sorry to go on.
Yeah, I just uh Yicheng, I I see your hand up, I just wanna point out that uh. We are now technically fifteen minutes into our next section and we still haven't started talking about our procedures, but so. We will continue until we're done with this, Yicheng, please.
Oh, I just the one thing that I would be interested in, it would be um a rundown of sort of sustainability and. Kind of resilient schools of of the construction portion of the of the building itself, of maintenance. So what are the some of the features that you're doing to add to the town's sustainability goals? That that would be great.
So one thing, Yicheng, I'll just say first, so um Ken Pruitt, the sustainability director, did write an email to the board. It's it's probably deep somewhere in the inbox there, but it actually is going to be in the March first, as part of the March first packet. And talked about um. And gave his comments of about that and is so um, yeah, so just so.
So I remember that, but I would love to see how the uh the um applicants are, you know.
Okay, so um what I would suggest then is that if the rest of the board has any questions or concerns. Send them on to Brian and please try to send them in the near future rather than the far future, so that. The developers can't, development team can respond to them by our March first or. Earlier than March first.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be much more aggressive than that, only because. You know, full disclosure, I am on uh vacation all next week due to uh. A school, school vacation, so I'm gonna say that if there's gonna be any comments or 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 really not comments, really what we're looking for is. Information here, wha- what additional information? Do do the board members need to make a decision regardless of what that decision is, what additional information is is needed? And I would say that's honestly, I I I need that by, you know, Thursday night or Friday, something like that. I I fully am out next week.
Brian's foot has been put down, so, yep. Everyone, please get to Brian, that to Brian by close of business Thursday. So Brian doesn't have to worry about it next week. Okay, um so the next thing that uh I wanna go over and Brian, can you pop up that email I sent out? If you have it available, the one I sent out late, I forget when it was, I think it was Saturday. So when we're going through um our decision making process. We are looking in particular at um. Three parts of the uh the bylaws. There are the um. Let me get them in order. Section, we're looking at the design review, site plan review and special permit.
Is this the, this is the one uh from Saturday?
That's the one and I just made it go away, hold on a sec. There we go, oh, come back. Yeah. So. In particular, we're looking at um. Let me go through and I wanna quote some of the important language in um some of these, so. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get page through the uh. So the the general, so seven thirteen fifteen five are the general standards for site plan review. And the the key, it lays out a number of um areas that we are going to be considering. And the important point is it says, in the review of any site plan conducted under this section. The S B G A shall determine that reasonably adequate provisions have been made by the applicant. Thank you, Brian, so those are the standards that we're going to be using to review these. When we get to uh the next one is. Under seven thirteen seven. Then we have design review guidelines, which are seven three dot seventeen. And um we will be moving through those. There's an awful lot there, so uh we'll have to figure out a way of of going through there um efficiently.
So um yeah, I think that's, that is where um Phillips hel- uh would would help. In in reviewing that. But we do need to go go through that according to, like you said, there are three sections that we have to go through, site plan review. Special permit criteria and then the design review guidelines.
Right. We're also gonna be, so there are a number of other um sections in here, for instance, inclusionary housing. We're gonna be looking at um with the help of the Harrison Partnership Board. Et cetera, and then uh we're gonna get to, then we also is section um. Nine dot four dot two, which is our special permit process. And section nine four two. Is.
So this is the, yeah, this is the crux of the criteria for special permits.
And if you go back up to that paragraph, Brian, I think the key is um the the guideline we have here is. Unupless otherwise specified, special permits may be granted by the S B G A. If it finds that the beneficial impacts of the proposed user structure will outweigh its adverse effects on the town or neighborhood. In terms of the particular characteristics of the site and the proposal in relationship to that site. And so the key here is that uh we know that no project is perfect. That every project has its advantages or pros and cons, advantages, disadvantages, whatever you wanna call them. But the the question before us is. Do the positives outweigh the negatives or the beneficial impacts greater than the negative impacts? And so those are, that's the key, and then of course, as Brian pointed out, those are the um. The individual elements we will be looking at. So.
So just to, sorry, DM, just to say one, one thing, just to kind of. Explain that um that's a little bit further, I guess. But um really for the board and anyone who's listening. Related to this criteria, so the special permit granting authority, in this case, the planning board, you know, relies on experts and other boards and committees. To kind of assess a- assess these, the the uh these criteria. And the the main part of a special permit, like DM said, is to say that. Boards, committees and experts come up with concerns, some are serious concerns, some are not serious concerns. The ones that are not serious, uh and meaning not dealing with public health and safety. Yeah, the the board has the uh the ability to, like DM says, weigh weigh the. The beneficial impacts and the negative aspects, so. Using that as a as the lens of reviewing it, that's how you should be reviewing these criteria. So it's kind of like one step where you were, we're gonna be going through all of these, saying whether it meets or not meets. Or it could meet better, that type of thing, but then on top of all of going through these criteria. You can say, then really have to have on one side those beneficial impacts. And you can say, based upon these beneficial impacts, does it actually outweigh the the concerns, pitfalls, issues? With all of these criteria and really using that mindset, um well, you have to do that for here. It is a little bit different for site plan review, like uh like DM said, I just wanted to reiterate that. That those are, that is the crux of it, the beneficial impacts outweighing any adverse effects. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, always useful to have your clarifications. So if you wanna, if you can flip back to that email I wrote. So the process is, as I. Wanna lay out is that um we also have to look at this project in the context of the. Designs for the entire P U D and the context of the rest of the. The the reason why the zoning was put in place. Um and those are actually part of our use regulations where it talks about the reason for the zoning, what it was trying to accomplish. And so I think that we all know that this is the first large development in the downtown, or I should say the center. For so for a long time. And so it will, of course, i- it will receive particular attention from everyone because of its newness. But it is the first of. We anticipate other developments and so we need to look at that within that context. So. The procedure I I was, that I'd like to discuss right now is towards the end of this, if you scroll up a bit. Is the idea is that we would go through these um elements in our, that we need to go through individually. And that um at each stage, we will not be discussing them in terms of a dialogue. I think hopefully at the point we come to this, people will have made a decision. And if you believe that. This project meets that criterion, you could say, yes, it meets it, or it would meet it if we did this. Or there is a negative impact which we could ameliorate if there were some other condition to be put on that, so when you were looking, trying to come up. Look at these elements, think about if there is something you think could be done to remediate it. Or if this goes along into, as Brian was pointing out, that overall concept of. Weighing the positives versus the negatives. We can put reasonable conditions on things, in particular, you see there um. It gives us kind of broad. I mean, the the last part of that is, as the special permit granting authority may deem necessary to serve the purposes of this bylaw. It doesn't provide us with a lot of guidance, but we are going, they are, they do have to be reasonable. So um so that's something to think about. So I I I described a little bit about what the conditions could be doing. One of the questions in our procedure is when we're talking about a particular condition you might wanna put on, which might affect various. Multiple elements, where where is the point we start to discuss that? And then when we get to the end, that's when we we come together and we decide if there are additional conditions. After we discuss pros and at that point, we will be, I think, discussing the the balance of the positives and the negatives and if there is something we feel could provide. A greater positive, then we could put for their condition, so that's my concept of the outline for our decision process. And I welcome all input.
That's a first.
Thank you, DM, that was really helpful. Well done.
Oh, thank you, but I I wasn't hoping to leave you speechless. Well, you weren't speechless, but uh. So this is, yeah, go ahead, Yicheng.
I'm a little nervous because each one of these uh design review, site plan, special permit have, you know, several points to it and. Are you suggesting that we go through each one and then talk about them or is it better to to sort of have? People disagree or have issues with certain? Come to, come to the table and talk because I can see this discussion just.
This is, this won't be a discussion. It will not be a discussion, it will, it will not be a discussion.
Right, 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 oh, right, I see, so each one, each point will be um brought up and then each person will.
You, it's it's gonna, each criti- yeah, each criteria, so there's a lot of overlap between these three criteria. Especially site plan review and special permit, the design guidelines are certainly its own, i- i- its own entity. But there's a lot, a lot of the same criteria that going through site plan review and special permit. They're just viewed through somewhat different lenses, but the idea is that. To come with each, wi- wi- with ready to vote on whether or not this, the the development has has met those criteria. Uh not necessarily on the first, that that's not going to be possible, just so we're clear, we're um, that's just not possible. On on the first, we're going to, what we're going to be doing is getting together all of this information, that's the deadline that we've been given. That we gave other boards and committees and 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 consultants, so it's not like. The reason why we're bringing this up is that, as you say, there's a lot of criteria here. And you you know, a decision needs, you know, needs to happen uh at some point. And the I um, it's going to take time for each member to review. And and there's basically going to be some amount of time now, but then after uh these uh. Other boards and committees and consultants get more information from us to the first, there's also gonna be another chunk after. But I think the point of of what. I I think the point of of us talking about this now is that you gotta, you gotta start reviewing. Those criteria specifically through that lens and whether or not it meets it and if it doesn't, what the project could do to meet it. Or or maybe you, it's, maybe you can't meet, maybe the, it just doesn't meet that criteria, that's all, that, we need all of that. So that DM said, so it's not a discussion, it's what it, what is the vote?
And we do have to go through each element individually because. Our legal, our decision is legally binding based upon each of those elements, so we need to reply. I'm gonna use the word affirmatively, but I'm sure that's the wrong word, we have to have on record our decision for each of those elements. If someone wants to challenge our vote, they need to be able to point to a decision we made on each of those elements. And I think the the the, if you are in agreement, I mean, I think the the, it's easier if you just say, yes, I think it meets. If you say, no, it doesn't meet, then you do actually have to explain why you think it doesn't meet. I think that's the, the legal burden is to indicate why it doesn't meet. Of course, if you wanna say why you think it meets, that's also useful as well, but when it comes down to. I think if when this comes under legal review, if it is appealed, then the reason for the decisions, maybe you do have to. We'll we'll get counsel to tell us whether you have to say why you voted yes as well, I will step away from the cliff. So. Any other thoughts on that? Okay, well, um if you do have any other concerns, please think about them um and and we can. Bring them up um. Well, not next week, because we won't be reading next week, but we can, we can talk about them on the first. Or if you, if you have a epiphany at two in the morning, uh let us know. So at this point, I think that uh. We need to continue, I think we're done with 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 this um agenda item for this evening. And so as is our want, we need to continue this hearing to a time certain. And I believe that that time certain will be um.
March first.
March first, thank you, my calendar is slow. And so why don't we do it again, March first at seven fifteen? And if there is a motion for that, I would welcome it.
I'm moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kurt, okay, roll call vote, uh Cheryl Wolf.
Hi.
Sally Dale.
Hi.
Yicheng Scott.
Aye.
Kurt Spring.
Aye.
And DM Jerry says aye as well, so thank you all very much. Thank you very much to everyone from the development team. And uh. Thank you, Philip Chen, for showing up with your wisdom as usual, thank you, Brian Manter, it's good to see you again. And thank you, Ian Adal, and we will see you all in a couple weeks. And if you're going on vacation next week, have fun. So our next uh, our next item on the agenda is to talk about North Main Street. And uh it is, we we felt we could eat into it primarily because we're still in the process of trying to find someone who'll talk to us. Brian, do you wanna take the lead on that, on our progress there?
Sure, so uh DM Sally and I have been um busily talking with. And um trying to look for uh consultants willing uh to uh take on the the project. There's a lot of people that are doing a lot of work in general right now, meaning that um there's some people. A lot of people are hiring because there's so much work. So the idea of taking on more work is somewhat daunting, couple other things weren't necessarily the right fit. But we do have um. uh, Gamble and Associates, as well as, oh, uh, sadly, the name is, um, escaping me, uh, Fielden, no.
Oh, Stoss.
For, not Stoss, Form, Form and Place.
Form and Place, yes.
And then M A P C, so, at the moment, so there are three consultants that, uh, we will eventually have scopes from over, meaning over the next week or so, um, M A P C, we kind of already have. And then, um, so those would be the three quotes that were, that would be necessary, it's unclear at the moment, uh, whether or not we were going to be interviewing these, that was something that I think we, Sally, D M, right, we wanted to kind of talk about that real quick, cause that someone, one of the applicants asked, and we hadn't talked to the board about it. So, that was one thing that's certainly on the agenda for tonight, uh, was kind of determine what, if any, there, if there's gonna be some type of an interview process amongst these current three in the running, uh, and we would just, because this is under thirty thousand dollars, uh, we would just need to, again, elicit, solicit three quotes, um, not have to go through an R F P. So, I don't know, D M and Sally, if you had anything, any other updates related to that?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that, um, it may sound to you like there were four people, or four groups in the running, but one of them's Stoss.
Stoss.
Adol, they, uh, they decided that, uh, their expertise wasn't exactly in the area we were looking. And they would welcome us coming back to them in their area of expertise, which was more landscape, more of the, the physical landscape design, I guess I'd call it, probably got that wrong. Um, but, but they, you know, we were looking for, um, zoning help as well, and so they, they, they certainly knew how to do outreach, and they knew how to do landscape design, but I think that that third, third leg of the stool wasn't in their bailiwick. Um, one of the things that, uh, I found incredibly useful in our discussions with these people was actually hearing their point of view, and so I would, I would really encourage the board to ask to do an interview, just so that you get a feeling for them, I think that what they provide on paper will not really give you the, the full picture of what they're capable of. So, um.
D M, can it work logistically that we could get, um, um, M A P C, Gamble, and Form and Place all to come in on the same evening?
We've done that.
Yeah.
And we would give them each, you know, thirty-five, I don't know what the timing is.
No, we, we have given them much less than that.
Yeah, I think it's, it's usually, usually you have fifteen, you know, fifteen, fifteen minutes where they kind of present something for seven or eight minutes, and then we have, I mean, it's very quick, we've done, we've done it several times before. Um, but yes, that's totally possible, uh, if, you know, um, if, if the time is right for them, meaning it might not be able to work out on the eighth, or the fifteenth, or, you know, uh, uh, of March, I don't, I don't know.
I think it's.
We would just wanna find the soonest Tuesday that they can all come.
Yeah. And, and Sally, I, I only wanna put a time limit on, because knowing this board, we will need approximately four times as much time on our own, so.
Right, I just wanted to get it scheduled as soon as possible.
Yeah, yeah, um, so I, we haven't worked out, um, the schedule for exactly what's happening on the first yet. And I think that will be difficult to get them to come in, because Brian will be out for a week.
Yeah.
Um, so, I think that the earliest we could expect it might be on the eighth.
That'd be awesome.
So I think there's a, uh, I mean, let's just realistic, I would say. I'm certainly really, um, encouraged by what we have heard in our interviews so far, so I think there are certainly candidates who, I think we will find someone who will do an excellent job.
Well, we can certainly reach out to the three and see if they're available for the eighth.
That'd be great.
If, um, if, if it's that simple, if everyone's kind of on board with doing that, that's easy.
And I think that's about, um, the only other question we might have is, um, I know we talked about how much we the cost of the project will be, and we had talked about ten thousand dollars prior to the thirtieth, based on our fiscal year, and what other things we might need to do, get out of our, our, um, consultant's money this year. Um, we haven't spent any out of our, um, our consultant money yet this year, so, this fiscal year, so we still have the thirty thousand. I think.
Well, we have, no, we have forty-five thousand in the professional services right now.
Yes, but fifteen thousand is, is, um, set aside for Holton.
Correct.
Do we need to use that this fiscal year?
No, we do not, that, that was given to us by town meeting as a special, so it doesn't, it doesn't have a, a, expiration.
I don't, uh, D M, I don't know if that's correct, I believe there is forty-five thousand in our professional services budget right now.
Do we have to use by June thirtieth?
I think we need to come back to that, cause I think last year we only got the thirty thousand, plus the fifteen from town meeting.
All right, well, I will, I will further look into that, I'm pretty sure, the last time I looked up on Munis, that, that the, the professional.
I don't know how it, well, we should, if fifteen K of that is from town meeting, I think it has a different deadline.
Uh, yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, but. I'll figure that out.
Classification issue.
Yeah, that can explain why Brian and I keep coming up with different numbers.
Um, so I don't know if we wanna talk about it now, but I just think that it would be great for the board to wrap their heads around what's up with the investigation about Holton Street when we get to that. If we can get that on the agenda as, as kind of a briefing.
Yeah, we, um, that, that, that was on, I mean, we, we talked about that at last meeting, there's no other, there's no further.
Nothing else, okay.
There's no thing further, no.
So we're holding money for a project that is kind of just hovering?
No, this project is moving forward, this, that, that does not affect the projects, the two projects in Winchester.
N- n- no, so my Holton, we're holding money for Holton.
Oh, so sorry, so sorry. Mis- misunderstood, totally misunderstood what you were talking about.
No, I'm just, I'm not saying, we're, we're holding supposedly fifteen thousand dollars that we got from town meeting, which might be misclassified in Munis, whatever.
Correct.
Um, that money is sitting there waiting for us to activate it, so we, I, I don't know at all what the planning board's sort of work plan is around this project.
No, you bring up a good point, is basically, we, we, we determined, I don't know when it was, that the focus for the next little bit would have to be on North Main Street because of this June thirtieth, whereas the fifteen thousand for, for Holton. Um, but fr- frankly, just to be, well, just, 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 just to say that, um, ten Converse is, is taking up a lot of our time. Um, you know, a lot of our time, uh, to the point where other work is and decisions and that type of things are just not, we just, we just don't have, you know, two and a half hours, somehow two and a half hours twice a month is not doing it, and I'm, I'm just saying, part of the reason is be, is because of ten Converse. I'm not saying we could have made that go any faster, th- these processes take this long, that, you know, three to six months, that's what they take, so.
So also, on the professional services side, you received a quote from our town council about doing that project with the.
We can't, we can't discuss that right now, because it's not on the agenda.
Okay, but that is something else to put on the list.
So, yeah, we are, we are, our agenda says North Main.
Okay, good.
Yeah, um, we can talk about monies, um, but I think it's obvious that Brian and I are reading different tally sheets, or.
We'll, we'll reconcile on our, on Friday at nine, yeah.
Oh, wow, okay, yes. Tune in, Friday at nine. Um, and so I think that is the end, uh, if there's no, but we have no, I have nothing more on North Main, any other concerns? Nope. Okay. Um, so at this point, um, we're actually ahead of schedule, that doesn't make any sense, we're two minutes ahead of schedule. Um, as we segue into, um, executive session to take up, um, performance review, and just for those people out in Winchester land, the reason we are having so many of these is because we're only getting them down to chunks of time that we can fit into our schedule, it has nothing whatsoever to do with the qualities of any of the people involved, it's just merely scheduling hell. Um, so, we will need a vote to get into executive session, so, can someone please make the motion?
So moved.
And, is there a second?
Second.
I mean, E Ching, sorry. Roll call vote, please, uh, E Ching Scott.
Aye.
Uh, Cheryl Wolf. Uh, Sally Dale.
Aye.
Kurt Spring.
Aye.
And D M Jerry says aye as well, we are now in an executive session, and for everyone else, I forgot to say this, we will, uh, be in this session until the end of the meeting, so, um, we will be turning off recording, thank you very much, WinCam. Thanks to, uh, Brian Manter, who just left us, our Assistant Town Engineer.